We're going to call this through, 2024 meeting to order. If y'all, Commissioner Covenant is going to say a prayer for us. Y'all stand.
Heavenly Father, we just give you thanks, Lord, for this great day that you've given us and this great, great county and great country that we live in, Lord. We ask that you bless, bless this meeting and you bless us to make good decisions, Lord. We ask that you, you hold those who protect us, that you stand with those and keep them safe. For us, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. If y'all join us in prayer, our pledge of allegiance, I'm sorry. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thanks everyone for coming out. Need to get a motion for their approval on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda with, with two changes. Community development, public hearing, item number one, has been withdrawn at the request of the applicant. And I would request, because we have a number of speakers who've asked to speak tonight, that we move public comments before executive session to allow for them to not have to wait for us to finish that.
I'll second that. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That carried. I need an approval for the meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of May 2024.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Need an approval for the consent agenda.
Ms. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now we're on the consent agenda.
Done.
Need to make a motion to close the regular meeting and open a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public meeting and open a public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Community development.
So this first item is for a sketch plot approval for parcel 30 at the Waterways Plan Development. They are proposing 104 single-family lots and 102 townhome lots to be developed in two phases. This application was deferred last month to address water and sewer infrastructure. And you can see the zoning map as well as an overview there, and then the proposed plat. The applicant has since provided a memo on how a package treatment plant would function. And the engineering department did indicate that they will follow up the board once they reviewed that and provide that information to the board on how, and they can decide how to move forward at that point. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Take comment?
Comments?
Anybody here? But here, speak for or against?
If there's anybody who could speak for or against that item, you can have to do that now.
Okay. Anybody here for or against? Please come up and state your name, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name's Dan Decker, 2001 Ross Avenue, Dallas, Texas. I'm here representing the owners of the property, Savannah Land Holdings. Just an update of what's going on, I'm sure y'all have been in discussions about this. I know that Commissioner Kiskin is, is trying to advance the ball on the Richmond Hill sewer situation, and I think, you know, that's all of our preferred solution to this problem. The only issue with that is that, you know, the county has been talking about that with us for at least two years now. So I think it's, you know, in everybody's best interest here to develop a plan B. That's what we think we've done with this package plan. I know that it's not an attractive option or the most attractive option for everyone. But, you know, if, if the Richmond Hill deal is continued to be delayed, then, you know, we got, we got some serious issues here. We're willing to defer for another 30 days to let Commissioner Kiskin see if he can advance the ball with Richmond Hill. Just please keep us updated. But we, we really feel strongly that we're running out of time here. Our contract with this plat is, we've had to extend it a couple of times. We, we would ask your diligence here on getting, getting the deal done with Richmond Hill. And if not, we'd like you to approve the package plan at the next meeting. But for now, we'll, we'll defer 30 days if that's okay with commissioners.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
The next item is the second reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map for property located at 1371 IG Linear Road. Mr. Michael is representing Spencer and Calamity Michael, and they're requesting to rezone an 8.12 acre tract of land from the A5 Agricultural to the RR 2.5 Rural Residential. The applicant plans to complete a subdivision to build an additional single-family residence. And on May 21st, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the requested rezoning. And this is located on the north end of the county, north of Pembroke. And you can see a better overview here as well as the zoning map right now. And then this is their proposed subdivision. And if you have any questions, I can answer them now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone here to speak for or against? We're on to the next one.
All right. Item number four is a second reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map for property located just down the road from the last item at 514 IG Linear Road. Mr. France is requesting to rezone a 10 acre tract of land from the A5 Agricultural to the RR 2.5 Rural Residential District. The applicant plans to just complete a simple lot line adjustment and have one tract smaller than the other. And the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval of this rezoning. And as you can see here, it is located on the north end of the county, just down the road from the last item. And this is the current zoning map. And you can see his proposed lot line adjustment here. Y'all have any questions for me?
No. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone here to speak for or against?
I'm here if you need to ask any questions. I'm, I'm the one.
I mean, I'm fine, you're welcome to come up and speak, but I'm, anybody?
I don't have anything specific.
We're, we're fine, thank you. All right.
So this item is the second reading of a zoning map amendment. Applicant is North Point Development, Inc. They're being represented by Thomas &amp; Hutton Engineering. And they are seeking to rezone a 259.10 acre portion of a 455 acre tract of land from A5 Agricultural to the I-2 General Industrial Zoning District. And so we presented this to you as a first reading at your meeting last month, and then took this forward to the first public hearing with our Planning and Zoning Commission in May. At that meeting, staff did present the case with our recommendation for approval because it complied with the county's comprehensive plan. And we recommended two conditions along with that. Those conditions relating to the requirement for water and sewer agreements as well as transportation agreements. Also at that meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission took some public comments. Of particular note was concerns from the property owners to the north of this development. And in response to those public comments and concerns, the applicant presented a third condition to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which would increase their required buffer along the north boundary from 50 feet, as was currently represented on their concept plan, to 100 feet. So those are the conditions that are being presented to you this evening. For a refresher on this site, you can see here from the overview map that we are looking at property on the north end of the county. This is located near the borders of Bullock and Effingham. Detailed location map gives us a close-up of this location. You can see that the property does front on Eldora Road and backs up there to the Agueche River to the rear. Now this proximity to the Agueche River does influence the existing conditions of the site. That western portion that is closest to the Agueche does slope pretty dramatically. So we do have a lot of wetlands as well as special flood hazard areas. And then to the, I apologize, to the east, going to, to the Agueche is where we see that sloping. On the western portion closest to Eldora Road is where we see that upland acreage. Now the zoning map does show the existing zoning as A5, however, you can see its proximity to existing I-2 industrial zoning across Eldora Road, where some previous rezonings have already occurred. Next, I have the comprehensive plan map. So as you'll recall, in 2023, we updated the county's comprehensive plan. A big component of the comprehensive plan is that character area map. And so with the update and adoption of the comprehensive plan and the character area map, we do see the location of this development situated there in the industrial character area, but also taking note of that conservation area there closest to the Agueche River. Now with the applicant's request and staying consistent with that update to the comprehensive plan, their zoning reflects that desire to preserve that area closest to the Agueche River, following the intent of the comprehensive plan. And so that is where the proposal came about, to only rezone a portion of this tract, that 259 acres to industrial, and then preserving the rest of that acreage closest to the river under the current A5 zoning. So with this exhibit, you can see that area in red, which is that portion that is proposed for the rezoning. That area in green is that existing A5 that is to remain. Now with the concept plan that was submitted, you can see the potential here for this development to build out with about three buildings totaling approximately 2.5 million square feet. The plan also includes an internal driveways as well as some paved truck and employee parking spaces. It does show green space as well as those stormwater retention areas. With this proposal, it's also proposing two access points onto Eldora Road in order to access the property. So with that, again, staff's recommendation was for approval, and then the applicant imposed that third condition that I presented to you earlier. I do think that the applicants are also here this evening, and they do have some additional exhibits within the PowerPoint slide to go over with you. Other than that, if you have any questions for me, I'm available.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Anyone here to speak for or against? All right, if you'd come up and state your name.
Good evening. My name is Starlee. I'm currently living behind my son's house. We were building our dream house at 1222 Eldora Road. We used to live at 1118 Eldora Road and sold that in October and bought five acres of family land back, and we're in the process of building our forever dream home. And it sits right in front of the warehouse. There is a small spot between us and that warehouse that sits off to itself, to itself, by itself, but it's not a real big buffer. We sold our house on Eldora Road to get off of the road, to move further back, away from the traffic, the noise, and everything else, to enjoy peace and quiet solitude. And we had no idea that a warehouse was coming right behind us. We're concerned about the river, the wildlife, the nature. I learned to swim the Agueche River. I think this is too close, and we're going too fast with all these buildings. You've got warehouses now that are sitting idle, they have not been used. You've got all this land that's been rezoned for industrial, just sitting there idle, that it's not been built on. Why do we need more? I'm just, if I'd have known that this might be coming, I would have never started my dream home, because I was trying to get away from it, and I feel like it's swallowing me. And here we are. There's not a lot of houses and homes and families on Eldora Road before you get to the dip and dashes, about a two mile stretch. And I feel like we are being pushed out by people that do not live there, do not understand that road. It's just, there's a few of them, just, just push them out. The people that are wanting to do this, they have every right to do what they want to with their land. I don't care. But you need to worry about your neighbors and what's happening with us as well. I know Thomas &amp; Hutton said that, you know, my house wouldn't matter, the noise and stuff, I beg to differ. When they were building the house, it's off of Highway 80 in Blitzen, 2:00 in the morning, we could hear the dump trucks, the beds slamming on the dump trucks. So yeah, we, there is a noise issue. I do not want to sit on my back porch, and I'm supposed to be here in nature and watch the deer come up and feed. And I'm going to hear 18-wheelers up and down the road, and back there slamming and everything else. And I really ask y'all to please reconsider this, because like I said, it affects not a lot of us, but my mother lives there, she's been there her whole life, 73 years. We've been there over 200 years, my family has. My son and daughter live on that road, they're at 1072. My mom is 1172. So please reconsider this and do not let this happen, and please don't rezon this land, please.
Thanks, Starlee. All right.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the county commission. My name's Jim Collins. I'm with Thomas &amp; Hutton. Also with me tonight is our project manager at Thomas &amp; Hutton, my partner, Michael Roach. We're here representing the zoning petition for Slater Farms. The zoning petition has been filed by a joint partnership of the landowner, Mr. Jeffrey Williamson, who's here tonight in the North Point Development Team. And I'd like to introduce the team. With me tonight is Ms. Kate Brown, Ms. Karen Gwynn, and Ms. Bennett Elkin. Also in the development team, we have Harold Yellen with Hunter McLean, who's going to speak after I go through some of the technical aspects associated with the, with the zoning petition. I don't really want to rehash anything that Amanda and staff presented as a very thorough presentation, but I did want to point out some of the things that the development team is doing to mitigate the impact of this project, not only to the surrounding community and neighborhoods, but also the Agueche River as well. As Amanda mentioned, the, the land owned by Mr. Williamson is approximately 455 acres. We're only requesting a rezoning for approximately 259 acres. That rezoning is entirely consistent. We're requesting an I-2 general industrial zoning. It's entirely consistent with the comprehensive plan, as Amanda mentioned. The easternmost portion of the property, which is around 255 acres, and it is in the conservation character area as defined by the comp plan, will remain in agricultural One of the, one of the requirements that we have with Bryan County is to provide 10% open space. That would be roughly 26 acres of this property. What we're actually proposing is 38% open space, and that's roughly 98 acres, so almost a four-fold increase on open space. Part of that open space is a buffer, and I believe we have another exhibit that better illustrates that, and if we can pull that up. But, okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, Amanda. So you can see on the, on the easternmost portion of the property, there is kind of a khaki crosshatch area between adjacent to the developed portions of the property and the wetlands that are part of the 255 acres that will not be rezoned. That, that buffer is anywhere from 150 to 300 feet in width, and it's intended to protect the wetland that abuts the conservation portion of this property. So again, that constitutes a portion of the, of the 38% open space. In addition to that, as staff mentioned, on the north side, we did meet with the, with, with some of the neighbors to the north, who had expressed concerns of the proximity of the project to their neighborhood. At that point, we elected to add another 50 feet to the 50-foot buffer that is required by Bryan County, which will provide 100-foot buffer. You can see most of the area on the north side of our property is vegetated. And there's two areas labeled A and B here on the west side and the east side of the property where it's at its narrowest. We've got some photos of those areas, just so you can see how thick this buffer is. This is the portion, actually the thinnest portion of the buffer, which is, which is labeled A. And on that side, there's about 115 feet of existing vegetation. And that vegetation straddles the property boundary. There's about 50 or 60 feet on the development side of that. So what we're proposing to get to the 100 feet is to add additional plantings in that area, so that everything on the North Point Development side will be a vegetated buffer. And you can see, again, the height of the trees. And this is the section in the rear where it's actually a wider section of buffer here. So we've got about 150 feet of vegetation. It's about 45 feet in height. And we feel like a natural buffer is, is, is the best buffer to have when we have the luxury of having that vegetation in place. I'd also like to point out, going back to the, the original exhibit, that the property, I know it's hard to see on this map, again, we have 200 acres of property between the developed portion and the Agueche River. And if you look at those dimensions, where it's closest to the river, it's still almost a third of the mile, a third of a mile away from the river. And on this furthest point, which is in the southern portion there, again, you can't read it, it's hard to see, it's almost two-thirds of a mile. So the average is, is almost a half a mile distance from the developed portions of the property to the Agueche River. I did want to talk a little bit about the storm drainage. I know there were some comments that were made to staff. Again, because of our proximity to the Agueche River, we're required to address the 100-year storm. The 100-year storm is about 11 inches of rain, and, and that is because we're, we are draining into a 100-year floodplain. What we'll be doing to address water quantity issues is holding post-development runoff rates to pre-development conditions for that storm. For water quality, we're required to remove 85% of suspended solids that go into those ponds generated by the runoff leaving the site. I know there was a comment made that, that all runoff should, should be retained and not released. We, we don't think that's a good idea for the health of the wetland system that I mentioned previously, which is on the eastern portion of, just inside the, the portion of the property that will not be rezoned. We think it's important, and we've got a linear pond system there that's very similar shape to the wetland. We think that it's important to have that pond there to help charge the hydrology of that wetland and maintain its health. I believe there was also a comment made that there are, there is development here within the 500-year floodplain, and that there, the comment was that there should be no structures allowed in the 500-year floodplain. I'd like to point out that, that all of the development around Exit 143, Highway 80, 280, the Hyundai site, Interstate Center, I just looked at the, the map before I came over here today, and about 30% of that development is in the 500-year floodplain. It's just a fact of life when you're developing in the low country. That concludes my remarks. Again, I, I think the developer has taken extraordinary means to help mitigate the, the impacts of this project. And at this point, I'd like to ask Harold Yellen to come forward and talk about the comprehensive planning process and how this plan complies with it.
Thank you, Jimmy. For the record, my name's Harold Yellen. I'm a lawyer with Hunter McLean, also representing North Point Real Estate. I promise you, the lawyer will not talk as long as the engineer did. I can promise you that. I think y'all know this, but since 1989, there's a Georgia Planning Act that requires every local government to complete a comprehensive plan. In failure to maintain a comprehensive plan, you lose your, what they call qualified local government. You guys are qualified. And in fact, as recently as, and I'm going to give you the exact date, on October the 10th of last year, this commission adopted a comprehensive plan, character area, and a future land use map. For the subject property, as staff mentioned to you earlier, the map identifies both an industrial character on the map along Eldora Road and a conservation character along the Agueche River. If you look at the petition that we have before you, at the plats that Jim has just showed you, the petition is to rezone 259.10 acres to I-2 along Eldora Road, right where the comp plan says to put it, and 196.3 acres will remain A5. the comp plan says to put it, and 196.3 acres will remain A5 in the conservation character, exactly where the comp plan says it should be. So as noted by your staff, and I'm quoting them from the staff report, "This petition is consistent with your future land use map and character map." Please keep in mind, and I've stood before commissions before, where there's a comprehensive plan and it's old, and people get up here and say, "Well, things have changed." In this particular case, this is not where Bryan County adopted their comp plan 10 years ago. To the contrary, your future land use map was adopted eight months ago. Eight months ago. It's unusual that you have a zoning petition that comes up that close to the actual adoption of the plan. In looking at comprehensive plans generally across the state, the only guidance I could find comes from the state of Georgia and from the Department of Community Affairs. The state of Georgia, in its guidelines, say, "Comprehensive planning by all levels of government is of vital importance to the state and to its residents." And the DCA, in its guidelines, say, "The purpose of a comprehensive plan is to provide a guide for everyday decision-making for use by local governmental officials," which is exactly why we're here following this plan. Quite simply, your future land use plan was the result of careful analysis by your staff with input from Bryan County residents. All any property owner can ask for is a predictable result based on approved plans by this commission. So with that, we would respectfully request approval of staff recommendation. Happy to answer any other questions that you may have. Both Mr. Collins and myself are available to answer questions, but thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Yellen.
All right. Anyone else? All right, come up and state your name, please.
First of all, I'd like to borrow a little something from Chairman Enfinger's campaign for chairman. Experience matters. And you know what experience has taught me around here? That what you heard from them two guys right there, they didn't mean anything, that what they just said, because everything up that they just told us is up for change, okay? Now, I'm going to read you a little something here. You're going to have to bear with me, I'm an old guy, but the reason why I say these things is, you remember the first master plan for Farm Road and Eldora Road? You guys, you've got to remember it, right? You remember that? Where there was going to be absolutely no trucks on Eldora Road, no exit or entry to warehouses on Eldora Road. The east side of Eldora Road was going to remain agricultural residential. All truck traffic was to be sent to Farm Road. No one lives on Farm Road, okay? That was the first master plan. All of that was pretty much a lie. And when I spoke at that meeting, I said so. That brings us to where we are now, ready to rubber stamp yet another industrial, environmental, noisy congestion traffic, 2,000 trucks a day, nightmare perpetrated on the citizens by our barely-elected officials who are duty-bound to act in the best interest of the citizens. To add this rubber stamp to go along with the first master plan, rubber stamp proves that they do not care at all about us. Y'all remember us, right? People that lived there?
Yes, sir.
The ones that are going to have to listen to all this stuff all day and all night, right? The experience Enfinger bragged about in his campaign is sorely lacking on this new rubber stamp. Look at Old Kyler Road, Highway 280, the new Hyundai plant, all the way up to the Hyundai plant, traffic in Blitston and all around it is a disaster because of the lack of infrastructure. Roads, sewer, water lines, two-lane Highway 80. So let's now look at what you rubber stampers will do next. Rubber stamp another industrial disaster on a totally insufficient road, no water, no sewer lines, 2,000 trucks a day, that's estimated, there'll be more than that. Too bad for the citizens' morning and evening commute up that road now, huh? They barely can get up it now. What are we going to do when construction starts with a road like that? Y'all ready to go ahead and approve that, too? As my Uncle Jed used to say, "Wee doggies, huh? We're ready to go." Well, I'm on a well for water. Reports say the wells may start to fail because of irresponsible withdrawal permitting we've been doing. I've consulted with an attorney, and since all of you are aware of the water problem, right? Y'all have heard about that on the news and everything, haven't you?
Of course.
Huh?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. I'm just checking to make sure. Because the attorney told me that since all of you are aware of the water problem, I'll be holding each and every one of you, along with Bryan County, who you all act for, responsible for my injury of no water when that happens. If residential property taxes don't go down for all the property residential, that we are working on getting all the homeowners to peel these, as you can't give a house away around these disasters, right? I mean, the people on Old Kyler Road, they want out of there, okay? You know what they can't? They can't leave because their house is worth nothing next to six warehouses that has dump trucks, trucks speeding up and down all hours of the day and night. Right now, there was an old blind guy at the zoning meeting that said that he can't sleep at night because they're out there beating on the construction in the middle of the night. Anybody ever hear of disturbing the peace? And we're going to go ahead and approve this? It just flies in the face of everything I know, okay? And the noise won't be tolerated. I can tell you that right now. I live in the bottom part of that property, and it's peaceful and quiet down there right now. And if I can't sleep at night, I'm going to be filing disturbing the peace charges until I can get enough of that going on, until I can get a lawyer to do something about stopping it. And legal action, that's all I got, that's all we're fixing to have left, because I already know what's going to go on here. The same thing that went on with the master plan for Eldora Road and Farm Road. I understand that, see? And I'm under no illusions. So that's what I'm letting you all know, is I intend to hold everybody in Bryan County responsible for the disaster that's fixing to happen down there, and there's nobody going to stop it, okay? Now, I'm an old guy. I spent four years in the Marine Corps. You'll pardon me if I've sounded disrespectful through all this business here, but in the Marine Corps, they teach you that, you know, if you don't deserve no respect, you don't get any. And when people come up here and tell me all this stuff, the pie in the sky, stuff that they're fixing to do, and it means nothing, because we've already proved that. Anyway, anybody got anything that shows me where I'm wrong about any of that? Can you tell me where I'm wrong about what we did on Eldora Road already? I didn't think so, because I'm right. So y'all do what you got to do. And coming up, like I say, noise and water, that's going to be two big things with me. And if I can't sleep at night, somebody's going to hear about it. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Anybody else? For or against?
Good evening.
State your name.
Ben Kirsch. I'm the legal director with Aguechi Riverkeeper. Thank you for hearing me out this evening. I sent you an email last week with some of my concerns, so I won't delve too deeply into them, but I just want to reiterate some of those points. The issue of the need for these warehouses in the first place. In the Savannah area, the vacancy rate of these warehouses is continuing to rise and rise. At the end of 2022, the vacancy rate was less than 1%. The most recent data has that vacancy rate at 8.25%. So 8.25% of all the warehouse space in Savannah is currently unoccupied, unused, cleared land, cleared natural space that is not being used for anything. There's more than 13 million square feet of warehouse space currently under construction, and that doesn't include the purpose-built warehouses that already have a contractor. That's 13 million speculative. That also doesn't include all of the rezoned unbuilt parcels of land, such as Seaport 16 Trade Center. It doesn't include any of that. That vacancy rate is going to continue to rise, and it's unclear whether there's any sort of need for this warehouse in the first place. I don't want to see Bryan County be the victim of overbuilding, clearing natural land, and ending up with millions of acres of warehouse space that's sitting unused, unusable, and destroying this beautiful county. The other point I want to bring up is the stormwater and flooding concern. We had the developers here talk about the 500-year floodplain. There's no restriction necessarily about building within the 500-year floodplain, but what that tells you is that water is there, water wants to run that way. And so as this property is graded, as it's paved, that water is going to speed up. With storms becoming more frequent, more intense, that water is going to have to go somewhere. The 500-year, the 100-year, the 50-, 10-year floods are all based on data that stops in 2010. And that 2010 data, I mean, just in the last 14 years, we see weather quite different than it was already. So what we want to see is retention that takes into account the increasing need of stormwater retention, not what the historical storms that aren't going to be here, aren't going to exist. It's the high, the property is the high point in the area. Water wants to run off the site. Developers at the Planning and Zoning Board said it would run off into the river eventually, which that's what stormwater features are supposed to do, but they're built based on those old storms that don't exist anymore. With those big storms, those stormwater features might not be able to handle big rain events. They are, they might just act as a pass-through, not pulling out all of the solids, the pollutants that are supposed to be taken out. They might just rush right into the river. Because this is a speculative warehouse as well, we don't know what kind of materials are going to be held in this warehouse and what needs to be treated for, what's going to possibly end up in the river, and what's going to have to pass through other people's property. So generally, those are our two big concerns, our stormwater and flooding, and the actual need for this warehouse in the first place. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have for me right now. If not, thank you for your time. We ask you that you follow the Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation and deny this rezoning. Planning Board considered all of this information. They didn't think this was the right thing to do. They didn't like the development east of Eldora Road. I don't like it either, so we ask that you take that into account as well and deny this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Jeffrey Williamson. I'm the manager of Slater Place Farms LLC, the entity that owns this tract of land. Just a little bit about my background. I was born and raised in this county. I'm a lifelong resident, and I'm also the former chairman of the Aguechi Riverkeeper Association. What you have before you is a piece of property that's going to be developed, one way or the other. And I've partnered with North Point because they're going to do it in the most sustainable and environmentally sound way possible. I can stand before you to say, I've had a plethora of calls from all kinds of both scrupulous and scrupulous developers to do various things on this site, and I selected North Point because of their track record and their history and their team. This development comports with your plan, and so the question is not whether or not to not develop anything. We could just not build anything and go back to the stone ages. That's not what is going to happen. It's going to be developed. This is the most responsible development that I have seen, and I encourage you to adopt our zoning requests. Any questions? Admit.
No, sir. Thank you for speaking.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. I need a motion to close the public hearing and then go back into regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing and re-enter our regular meeting.
Second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right. We go to the Savannah Land Holdings Sketch Flat for 204-acre subdivision located in Waterways Township subdivision, parcel number 075001. I need a motion.
Yes, sir. Real quick, a comment if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for speaking, Mr. Decker. We are still reviewing both options that you presented on your MOU. I think we are getting closer, and I'll keep you abreast of any of those updates. But with that said, I'll make a motion to defer for 30 days till our next meeting.
I'll second that. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carried. All right. Tyler Michael, second reading of an order to amend the zoning map for 8.12 acres, parcel number 014. That's 019, that's 04.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the rezoning of parcel number 01401904 from A5 to RR 2.5 zoning district.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Second reading of an order to amend the zoning map for 10 acres, parcel 014 that's 003.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the rezoning of parcel 014003 from A5 to the RR 2.5 zoning district.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right. North Point Development, second reading of an order to amend the zoning map of 259.10 acre portion of the parcel 033 that's 028.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve under the following conditions. Developers shall enter into a water and sewer agreement as required by the county engineer. Developers shall enter into a transportation agreement as required by the county engineer. And number three, the developers shall maintain 100-foot wide buffer along the northern property boundary.
All right. Need a second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carried.
So this first non-public hearing item is for a rezoning from A5 to I-2 for approximately 165 acres located on the Bullock-Bryan County line. This is a first reading, so no action needs to be taken. The first public hearing will be of planning and zoning on June 18th, and then we'll turn to you all on July 9th. And you can see the zoning map there with the property highlighted. And there's their concept plan, and the red outline is this parcel. And then that's sort of just a little bit of an overlay to kind of give you an idea where those buildings fall. Any questions on that one? The second item is another first reading. This is for a rezoning from B2 to R15 for the applicant to construct a single-family home. The property is approximately .68 acres and is located on Highway 17. This will have the same schedule with the first public hearing on June 18th and back to all in July. You can see the zoning map there. Any questions on that one?
Thank you. All right.
Item one under the county administrative items is consideration of approval of award of a contract fully construction for the construction of South Bryan Animal Control Shelter. We sent out a request for proposals for design-built contractor to buy turnkey, design, construction, and deliver-
Thank you. All right.
Item one under the county administrative items is a consideration of approval of award of a contract of fully construction for the construction of South Bryan Animal Control Shelter. We sent out a request for proposals for design-built contractor by turnkey, design, construction, and delivery of a new forty-four-hundred-square-foot building. We received those bids. Lowest bid, most qualified bidder coming in was fully construction. That bid was nine-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. Fully construction meets all the requirements for the experience as established by the RFP. And recommendation is to award this contract of fully construction in that amount.
I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. I make a motion to authorize staff to award a contract of fully construction LLC in the amount of nine-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars for the construction of the South Bryan County Animal Shelter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Oh, yeah. Raise your right hand, to be honest. All right. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Item two is a consideration of a contract of Sykes Brothers Incorporated for the Mill Creek Church Road paving project. What district is that in?
He's not here today.
We advertised for requests for bids for Mill Creek Church Road for paving of it and making drainage improvements, widening. And of course, that favoring, as I mentioned, we received those bids back. Sykes Brother came in as the lowest bid, the amount one-million-six-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and thirty-five cents. So we vetted the contract, vetted the Sykes Brothers, of course, who's done work with us previously. And our recommendation is to prove the staff to award the contract with Sykes Brothers for that amount for the Mill Creek Church Road paving project.
All right. I need a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion to authorize staff to award contracts to Sykes Brothers from Cobb Town, Georgia for one-million-six-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and thirty-five cents for the Mill Creek Church Road paving project.
Second.
All right. I'm going to raise my hand on that one because this has been a long time coming. All in favor? Yeah. Motion carries.
Item three is a consideration of magistrate judge reappointment. Superior Court Judges of the Atlantic Judicial Circuit request that Bryan County Board of Commissioners ratify the reappointment of the Honorable Karen Shervett Montgomery as the Chief Magistrate of Magistrate Court of Bryan County for a term January first, twenty-twenty-five, expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight. This ratification will also call for the import of Hollis Hill as Associate Judge for Bryan County magistrate court.
All right. I need a motion, I need a second.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move to approve a resolution appointing the Honorable Carolyn D. Shervett Montgomery as Chief magistrate judge and Hollis Hill as Associate Judge to the Bryan County magistrate court for a term to begin January one, twenty-twenty-five and expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carried.
Further in our road paving projects, after the retreat, or during the retreat in March, staff was asked to, to look into Blige Road, the possibility of paving that, also Church of God Road intersection realignment. The following is a task order from Thompson-Hutton to prepare a survey and right-of-way plans for Blige Roads. The county may obtain the necessary right-of-way from residents along that road in order to pave the existing dirt road during next year's budget cycle if possible. And also, the second component of that task order is conceptual plans for the realignment of the Church of God Road at the intersection of Black Creek Church Road. Our recommendation is to authorize the chairman to execute this task order to get those two projects up and going.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move to authorize the chairman to execute Task Order one-oh-eight in the amount of ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars with Thompson-Hutton for Phase One Blige Road survey and right-of-way plans of Phase One Church of God Road concept plans.
Second. All right. All in favors, raise your right hand. All right. Motion carried.
Item five is a consideration of a memorandum of understanding for the reimbursement of funds by the Joint Development Authority for Genesis Drive Water and Sewer Extension Project. The Savannah Harbor JDA has agreed to reimburse Bryan County for all expenses incurred by the county in connection with the design and engineering and construction, installation of certain water sewer, sewer infrastructure along Genesis Drive. This MOU between the county and JDA and also HMGMA establishes the terms and conditions of this agreement.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move to authorize the chairman to execute the MOU for the reimbursement of all expenses to Bryan County from the JDA.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carried.
Item six is a memorandum of understanding for the reimbursement of funds by the Hyundai Motor Group Metaplant America for various water and sewer-related items. HMGA MA is consideration, is considered to agree to reimburse Bryan County for all expenses incurred by the county in connection with various water and sewer-related items and furtherance the development of the Metaplant property, that MOU between the county and HMGMA establishes the terms and conditions of this agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the chairman to execute the MOU for the reimbursement of all expenses to Bryan County from HMGMA.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carried.
Item seven, of course, is related to item, previous item five. This is Bryan County is engaged or wants to engage Thompson-Hutton Engineering to design and permit the Genesis Drive Water and Sewer Extension Project. This task order includes design permitting, bidding, construction services for the water and sewer service extensions to serve future South I-sixteen development. The JDA has agreed that it would reimburse the county for certain expenses incurred by the county in connection with this design and engineering and construction oversight. MOU, of course, you just adopted, reflects that this, these, of course, will be reimbursed by the JDA.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move to authorize the chairman to execute Task Order one-hundred in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-seven-hundred dollars for the Genesis Drive Water and Sewer Extension Engineering Services contract.
Second. All right. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Motion carried.
Item eight is a consideration of a task order that's related to a previous MOU with HMGMA. Bryan County wishes to engage Thompson-Hutton Engineering to design and permit two water metering stations on behalf of HMGMA. The proposed task order includes the design and permitting for two meter stations along Bryan County mega site. HG, HMGMA has agreed that it would reimburse the county for certain expenses incurred by the county in connection with this design, engineering, and permitting. So our recommendation is to authorize the chairman to execute a corresponding Task Order one-oh-five.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move to authorize the chairman to execute Task Order one-oh-five in the amount of one-hundred-and-eighty, one-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-three-hundred dollars for the HMGMA meter stations in Bryan County.
Second. All right. All in favor? Raise your right hand. All right. Motion carried.
Item nine is the consideration of the adoption of the revised twenty-twenty-four building permit fee schedule. Bryan County adopted the twenty-twenty-four building permit fee schedule with budget. Non-residential building permit fees are based on the value of the building. The state legislature passed House Bill four-sixty-one during the most recent session. Governor Kemp signed the bill into law with effective date of July first. House Bill four-sixty-one removed the ability of local governments to base building permit fees on value in order to be compliant with state law. Bryan County must amend this permit fee schedule to change the basis for calculating the non-residential commercial building permit fees from that value to a square footage basis. So our recommendation in order to comply with that state law, that new state law is to approve the revised twenty-twenty-four building permit fee schedule.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the revised twenty-twenty-four building permit fee schedule.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Item ten is consideration of Task Order one-oh-six for Jernigan Road improvements in coordination with the state of Georgia-related infrastructure improvements for the Bryan County mega site. Bryan County has committed to the design permitting and construction of road rail improvements to Jernigan Road from O'Call Parkway Extension, which is under construction now, and the new interchange roadway. The proposed Thompson-Hutton Order one-oh-six, Task Order one-oh-six includes engineering design permitting, bid assistance, and construction services for this project. Our recommendation is to approve this task order for Jernigan Road improvement design.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the chairman to execute Task Order one-oh-six in the amount of five-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-one-hundred dollars for the Jernigan Road improvements.
I'll second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Motion carried.
Item eleven is Belfast Killer Road School Interests Project, Change Order number two under the current construction contract for this project. The easternmost roundabout did not include construction of what we call a fourth leg, which provide access to the adjacent Radiant property. Radiant has since requested county design and construction, the tie-in portion of the fourth leg at the roundabout in order to minimize disruption to the facility in the future. Radiant has agreed and already has reimbursed the county for the scope of work in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and fifty-two cents. Our recommendation is to approve Change Order number two for Reeves Construction Company, which would allow for the increase of the contract price in that same amount and extend the final completion date of the project to November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Change Order number two for Reeves Construction to allow for an overall increase to the contract price, the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and fifty-two cents, and extend the final completion date of the project to November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four.
I'll second. All right. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Motion carries.
Item twelve is a consideration of Richmond Hill Airport Study. This is Phase Two of that study and furtherance of public welfare and best interest of Bryan County and the citizens of the county is entered into an intergovernmental agreement with City of Richmond Hill and Development Authority of Bryan County. Like I say, this is a joint process and this study will assess the feasibility, cost, and impacts of an airport in Bryan County. The county's portion of these costs is shared with the other, the other party, two parties I mentioned equally. And the study shall not exceed our portion, the county's portion, of sixty-two thousand dollars.
Can I make a comment real fast? Just for the audience's edification, this is for a small industrial-type airport that is being studied to determine the, the impact to the, to the area from a positive standpoint, so. That's part of, part of the study is to just understand where even feasibly something like this could go based on the fact that there are other airports already in service in the area and a military base operating in the area as well. So I think that there's a lot, a lot of work to be done to understand what could or couldn't be done.
We will pay sixty-two thousand dollars looking at this. There's no tangible result coming back from that. This is all just, all we'll look into it, correct?
This is a study. Yes, sir. This is a, a, a study with two other partners involved in it for regional cooperation. It, it's just a, it's just a study. It's not a, the, the other partners are already mentioned in, in here. It's the city of Richmond Hill. Understood, sir.
All right. We'll take a, a motion for approval or denial.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental, government agreement with the City of Richmond Hill and the Development Authority of Bryan County regarding the joint funding of a comprehensive airport study.
I'll second, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carried.
Item thirteen is the consideration of approval and easement for water and sewer and access for the property identified as partial zero-two-nine-zero-six-one for the U.S. Highway eighty regional sewer improvements. This easement for water and sewer and access grants the county rights to access and relocate and construct utilities on the property, or only property owned by Michael Jackson, Matthew Jackson, and Jeremy Schuman. This easement for water and sewer and access is perpetual easement.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a resolution accepting real property for the purpose of water and sewer improvements as presented.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item fourteen is consideration of approval and easement for water and sewer and access for the property identified as partial zero-two-nine-zero-zero-seven for the U.S. eighty regional sewer improvements project. Bryan County is acquiring necessary easements and property, other property interests. This easement for water and sewer and access grants the county's rights to access, relocate, and construct utilities on the property owned by Love's Travel Stops and Country Stores Incorporated. Of course, this easement as well is a perpetual easement.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a resolution accepting real property for the purpose of water and sewer improvements as presented.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Are we going to move up to public comments now?
That's right.
All right. We'll get there. Favor.
County attorney.
Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioner, we moved up public comment before exempt session to allow folks to speak before we break.
Thank you. What about your?
My item will come after exempt session.
Okay.
Thank you, Attorney.
All right. Public comments, Mr. Jason Wilson. If you'd just state your name.
My name is Jason Wilson. I live on O'Calla Road.
All right, sure.
And as the guy was up here talking earlier, I'm the blind guy. That he was talking about. I lived down O'Calla Road now for fourteen years now. And I'm telling you, I live in a nightmare. Since they started putting warehouses down there, we live right across the street from the warehouse going up. There's no buffer. There's nothing out there. When them guys was working around, around the shift, sometimes I'd take my dog out at three o'clock in the morning. All I hear where we live at is beeping sounds from these trucks. I hear it in my house. This is twenty-four hours a day that we, we got hundreds of dump trucks going down that road. We got semi-trucks, we got cement trucks running constantly down that road. I've had the sheriff down there multiple times, but they can't stay down there. So once the sheriff leave, they go back to doing what they do. Running fifty-five miles an hour down that dirt road in our small little community that is now, it, it's over with. I used to love living out there because I get up and I walk down that dirt road. And several weeks ago, because I always walk down the, the road and I, I stay on the ditch line for, I'm completely out of the road. But I kept on hearing this truck coming, so I just stopped. And it kept on coming, it kept on coming. So I had to jump into the ditch. And it was RV Baker truck and he slammed on his brakes and he jumped out and he said, "I'm sorry, sir, I wasn't paying attention, I was on my phone." He said, "Are you hurt?" And I said, "No, but you got to pay attention." And I said, "No, but you got to pay attention." My wife coming home from work the other day, and she, first thing she tells me was that two trucks, two company trucks, running down the dirt road side by side racing. I mean, guys, what is it gonna take? I tell the sheriff all the time. We got dads that live there that is ready to go down there and start snatching truckers out of their trucks. Because it ain't just our neighborhood. This is where our families live at, and they going down our road 55 miles an hour in a dirt road. Take a semi truck, can that truck stop on a dime when we got one of our childrens going out the driveway? It's a matter of time until we gonna start having dead kids in that area. Kids don't pay attention. But we gotta make sure we put up these warehouses. We got to make sure that they go up everywhere without even thinking about Old Cala Road. It ain't just 20 families live out there. They grew up out there. It's our neighborhood that is now gone. So I went to go talk at Planning and Zoning, and they told me to come talk to y'all because we already living in an industrial park. So I've already talked to my neighbors, and the only thing we're asking for is turn it into industrial zoning. So if we decide to sell our house, we can make something off of it. Because right now, we can't do nothing. You couldn't give away my property. And I'm telling you, I will invite each one of y'all to come stay in my driveway 24 hours a day and see, would you want that at your back door?
I appreciate that.
And see, I'm not gonna stop walking. And I told the sheriff, I'm not, they ain't gonna take that away from me. They took everything else away. And like I said, we live down a dirt road, and the only thing we have 24 hours a day is dust everywhere. Because these semi trucks and these cement trucks, they don't care. They don't care about speed. But I'm telling you, there's dads in that neighborhood that's ready to start dragging people out of trucks. Because if it was your child out there, there'd be something different going on. And it's easy to sit up here and make a decision, and, oh, yes, we approve. I ain't heard anything since I've been here y'all said no to. And it's easy, it's easy to say, "I approve," but you need to start looking at the neighborhoods and get out there in the neighborhood and talking to the neighbors. Because the only time that happens is when y'all do something stupid, then we have to come up here and talk to y'all about it. But I'm about ready, and I told my wife, it's something, because I know people at two of the news station. If something don't change, if the buffers don't go up and the trucks don't stop, if y'all keep rezonating something to help us out, because y'all did everything else, this is the only thing we're asking, is rezoning. I'm about ready to call the news people and find out why y'all don't care about us down that road. Get them to start feeling what's going on down there.
Yes, sir.
All I ask y'all to do is take some time and think about us.
Yes, sir.
And please let me know if y'all gonna do something, or am I just wasting my time by coming up here?
No, I think we need to discuss exactly what the options are that you're talking about and the process that that might look like.
Because every neighbor I talked to said, "Yeah, they will go right along with that rezoning."
And what do we need to do?
Mr. Taylor, on the front end, other than call the sheriff, what could be done about the safety issues with the trucks?
Well, we can look at their permits.
We...
Because I know we've had some crazy poor stuff out there before. We've worked shut down the job site, so, I mean, yeah, definitely. I'm sorry for the force of impact.
There's no other traffic flow other than Old Cala available, is there?
One of the things that's going on is, of course, it's not gonna be soon enough for anybody, but they're putting in the interchange, and that, what we said yes to on the other side, that was to tie that into that interchange.
That needed to be done yesterday.
That'll be done a while.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll come out there and have a little...
Yeah, we live on the last house on the road, right across from the church. Please stop by.
Yes, sir.
419. We greatly appreciate y'all coming.
Thank you for your coming.
Thank you. Mr. Seaman.
Good evening, gentlemen. Professor M. Thomas Seaman here. Want to say thank you for your resolution last month for election integrity. It was a great first step. Tonight, I just want to say there's more to do. We need to move on to the second step. I want to give you a report from the Georgia State Elections Board meeting last month in May. I don't know if you had time to watch that, but here's what happened. Dr. Janice Johnston, one of the members of our state elections board, said this, "We should be embarrassed by our chief elections officer, Secretary of State Brad Rappensberger. We should be embarrassed by the Georgia State Elections Board for their handling of this case, the Rossi case." She said, "There were 140 violations of the Georgia Election Code by Fulton County in the 2020 election." This is in our state elections board is realizing this. Failure to secure, protect, and document the safety and authenticity of votes in Fulton County. Failure to preserve 380,000 ballot images from 2020 is gross negligence." And then she said this, "There's no way that 2020 election should ever have been certified as true and accurate by our Secretary of State Rappensberger or by Governor Kemp." So this has finally come out, three years later. We should have never certified our election in Georgia. She goes on, "We should amend all of our election records to reflect the correct totals. We request our Secretary of State Rappensberger to invalidate 17,852 votes that had no ballot images." Now, if you know the way our machines work, no ballot image, no vote. So they came up with 17,000 votes with no paper, nothing there. "We request the Secretary of State to expunge 20,713 votes that had no source tabulators." The tabulators are what reads them. No reading. "There were 16,000 votes that were added electronically." That means we have a cybersecurity break. Somebody crashed into the system, added 16,000 votes. No source tabulators, no paper, no nothing. They've discovered this now. There's no chain of custody, no way to authenticate these votes. The state elections board will, here's what they said, "Refer this evidence to the state attorney general for investigation and prosecution, and also appoint a monitor team to oversee the Fulton County election in 2024 to ensure there's no repeat of the shameful handling of our elections." So we have a big problem here. No one has been arrested, okay, for 140 violations of our election code in Fulton County. In other words, there's no deterrent here to motivate the people in Fulton County not to cheat again, because that's what happens when we arrest them. We seem to be doing a good job with our elections here in Bryan County, but here's the problem. We're part of a statewide system. So when Fulton County cheats and throws in 16,000 illegal votes, it makes our votes here in Bryan County not really count. So that's the problem. So since you are representatives, we are asking that you contact the Secretary of State, contact our state attorney general, and demand that they investigate and prosecute this massive reelection fraud in Fulton County so we can have a fair and honest election this fall. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Donald Smallwood.
I know Tom already talked about this, but we really do need to do something with the election and irregularities that we've seen, not only in the 2020 election, but also in the 22 election. Our county, we haven't had any problems. We know that. There might have been a few irregularities. I was a poll watcher, so, you know, I actually watched. Up in Fulton County, which was the big screw-up, where they just didn't care, you know? They were determined that Biden was gonna get in office, had over almost 40,000 irregular votes. And the, I wanted to read this because it's actually from the Georgia Republican Party State Committee, and this was from May 18 of this year, 2024. Whereas the Georgia State Election Board discussed cases SEB 2023-025 on May 7, 2024, outlining over 140 violations of the Georgia Election Code by Fulton County in the November 2020 election. And whereas state election board member Dr. Jan Johnston detailed 17,852 certified votes lacking ballot images or unidentified sources, 20,713 votes with no identifiable source tabulation, failure to properly amend election records and audit totals. Whereas Dr. Johnston mentioned to amend records, invalidate, and authenticate problematic votes, refer evidence for investigation, and recommend monitors for the 2024 Fulton elections. And whereas the state election board failed to enforce election laws and address these irregularities. Therefore, be it resolved that the Georgia Republican Party expressed grave concerns over the 2020 Fulton County election irregularities. Supports Dr. Johnston's motions to address these violations, calls for reprimand of the state election board for failure to uphold the laws. Demand the Georgia Attorney General investigate these matters and recommend stringent 2024 election monitoring in Fulton County. The reason I'm bringing this up, not only our county, but every county in this state needs to stick together to make sure that we have a proper election in the 2024 election. I've been dealing with this since 2018, when I really got involved with the Republican Party. I just can't understand why, as a state, why we can't stick together and get the votes right the first time. Another thing, why did we have to go with these Dominion machines? I mean, really, we've been doing paper ballots. I've been doing paper ballots my whole life. And these machines, you don't know, once that paper goes into that machine, you don't know how that machine's gonna vote for you. You don't get anything back telling you, well, this is how you voted. You know, why can't we get something back? If we're gonna use these machines, why can't we get that same sheet back telling us, each individual out here that goes and votes, what we voted? Because once that ballot goes into that machine, we don't know where that ballot goes. We don't know who it voted for us.
All right.
And, you know, that's my main concern. I want paper ballots back. These Dominion machines are demon. They're demonized. And that's the way I look at it. Because they're electronic, you don't know how in the hell they're, you know, how they're voting for you. And I think, as a county, we need to go back to paper ballots and do away with these Dominion machines. I appreciate it, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Betsy?
DeBree.
DeBree? Okay.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you. My name is Betsy DeBree. I'm here today to bring your attention to the Pride display at the Richmond Hill Library. As I'm sure you know, June is the time when a lot of people like to celebrate Pride Month. I am not one of those people, and I think a lot of people in Bryan County feel the same way. I appreciate that promotion of this is not being done by the Bryan County local government. I appreciate that. Thank you. That's true, all except for the library and our schools. That's another subject. This is the third year the library is promoting a homosexual pride display. So when the librarian was asked to take down this display outside the children's section, she refused to do so. The library board suggested that the display then be moved over to the adult section of the library. It was moved, but going to the library and looking at it, the librarian basically doubled down, made the display even more prominent than it was before. There's a bright rainbow logo plastered everywhere, along with other brightly colored signs to attract attention. It's easier to see and notice than ever, and there are still children's books on it. The library board was told that there are only 17 copies of these types of LGBTQ whatever books out of 12,000 in the Richmond Hill Library. This is a lie. There are hundreds of titles which can be requested and checked out. Many people have checked out these books to get them out of the children's section. It adds up to way more than 17. I have here with me in my bag just a small sample of books that were on the children's LGBTQ pride display in Paris, if you wish to look at any of them. Just a couple, couple brief excerpts. I apologize ahead of time for the content. One of the books is called "A Pride Guide." It says, "Sex toys are difficult for minors to purchase, but with the internet, all things are possible." Go to blank.com and blank.com to find dildos, vibrators, dental dams, et cetera. And then this is a manual on how to do annual sex, despite what you see in porn. Stretching is a big part of prep. Start with fingers first. Lube is important to avoid pain and trauma. Do not go from anus to mouth to vagina. Intestinal parasites and hepatitis are a concern. Never let anyone put a penis in your butt without a condom on. Dental dams should be used when putting a mouth on someone's anus. This is called rimming. So these were all from books that I took right outside the children's section for LGBTQ Pride Month. I've got other examples, but I don't really want to say them, and I'm sure you all really don't want to hear them. So this is all obviously salacious trash, but why is it being promoted to children? Why does all this have to be in our faces 24/7? A friend just texted me that she said, "I went to the library last week. I was immediately taken aback by the pride cubicle next to the children's section. My son immediately ran toward it because of all the bright colors." I said, "No, your section is over this way. I know why it's right by the children's section. It makes me very angry. I will not be going back to the library during the month of June." So clearly, this is a terrible message, but it's also making people avoid a public service. You should be able to go to the library and not have to be worried about what your kids are gonna be seeing there. Our government services should not be promoting this to anyone, much less to children. The deviation from truth that the pride movement teaches has done nothing but harm our children. Just look at the number of kids that identify as some wacky something, not to mention how many children are depressed, confused, suicidal. So I'm here to ask you to have the library remove the display, re-shelve the books, and to do so permanently so that Pride Month is not recognized going forward. It's certainly recognized everywhere else you look. Our library should not also be promoting this. They are a government group. They're promoting what is essentially a political message at this point. And many of the community vehemently disagree with this political message. So we're not asking for a display promoting abstinence and heterosexual marriage. We're just asking that our library, our public library that we pay for with our funds, remains neutral. So I'm asking you now, tonight, to vote, to have the display permanently removed. It's not a hard thing to do. It is the right thing to do. It's not, you know, I don't think a big issue. Yes? You have a question?
Mr. DeBree, we have two more people to sign up to talk about the library, and then we'll have the county attorney give the county's perspective on the library.
So, you know, in addition, June happens to be Christian Heritage Month. Are we gonna put up a Christian Heritage display? May was Jewish Heritage Month. Are we gonna put up a Jewish Heritage? We don't need to be getting involved in all these political and religious things in our government building. We need to be neutral. It's not a big deal. We're not saying remove these books completely from the library. No one is saying that. We're just saying we don't need to have a special display for that. The Pembroke Library doesn't do it. This is done solely by this current librarian, who's decided she thinks it's a great idea to promote this, especially in front of kids. So this isn't a big deal. I don't even know what the attorney... I don't even know if the attorney has anything about it, because it's, all you have to say is, hey, we're just not going to be recognizing Pride Month anymore, or whatever month, because it's a political issue, and we don't need to do this as a government thing. So not a big deal. I'm sure you all will write the thing. I really appreciate your time, and thank you for what you do for Bryan County.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, CJ O'Brien.
My name is Chris O'Brien. I moved down here to Richmond Hill from New York State after twenty-four years in the military. I came here because I wanted to. I share Richmond Hill values. And we all should share Richmond Hill values. Pride Month is not a Richmond Hill value. That is not what the majority of the people who live here want, okay? We don't need to be exposing our children to that. You know, as a member of the military, one of the things which I learned was all about traditional American values. I grew up with traditional family values. We had a mother, a father, and children, okay? We had laws, we had rules that you had to follow. I joined the military where there were rules and regulations. Just because I didn't want to do something was not a reason I could get away with not doing my job, not following the rules and regulations. While we have special interest groups today who figure that they can buy their way to get whatever the hell they want. Doesn't matter what our country stands for, doesn't matter what our laws are. Look what the hell is happening in places like New York City, Washington DC, where they just annihilated the park right outside of the White House. We've got to stop this stuff. We have to have rules and regulations. We have to have law and order. We have to follow the will of the people. As a public servant, you work for the people of Bryan County, not the other way around. I recommend that what you guys do is what Betsy DeBree requested, that you remove the special entrance of gay pride from our library, so that we're not being exposed to something which does not stand with our traditional American values and the values of Bryan County and Richmond Hill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you for your comments. I think Mr. Jesse France is gone. Robbie Beckett is gone. Starlee's gone. Wayne Carney's gone. Catherine and Andrew Cobb. How about Adriana Bonstil? Is that right?
Mr. DeBree spoke for us.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Ben Kirsch, he's gone. All right, would you want to answer?
Sure, Mr. Vice Chair, thank you. So there are several issues with the recommendation to have a vote to direct the library to remove certain content. The first issue, of course, is the legal issue. The First Amendment prohibits the government from restricting speech and from regulating content in that speech. So the First Amendment would not allow you to direct anybody to take down any type of speech. Doesn't work that way. You're not allowed to do that. The Supreme Court of the United States has said that repeatedly since the First Amendment came into effect a long, long time ago. The second issue is this, the library board, of course, governs the actions of the library. This board does not. The library board has hired an executive director to operate that library, and so any concerns or complaints about how the library is functioning, what it's doing or not doing, needs to be addressed to the library board, who can then address it with their executive director. This board specifically does not have any authority to direct those, that action or that conduct. So if any questions about any of that, I'm happy to answer them, but otherwise, there's no real action that you can take.
All right, thank you.
I've invited the executive director, and the library board said they couldn't do anything and that it was up to the Bryan County Commissioners to do something, because you guys are in charge of the library. So now we're getting overwhelmed. We don't do that. So who actually is in charge? Who hires the librarian? She's doing this on her own. The executive director said that she didn't tell her she had to do it, but she didn't tell her she couldn't do it either. She said it was up to her. So the librarian has full autonomy in the library to do whatever she wants?
It's a great question, and I can only go off of what the attorney tells me.
And you need to do a term.
Okay, Mr. O'Brien, thank you very much. But I, I don't mind carrying on a conversation with anybody that has an issue in our community, no matter what it is. So I welcome the opportunity to talk to any of y'all after the meeting tomorrow, the next day, and so on, to address any and all of your concerns, but, you know, I've been advised of what the limits are, of what this body can do, and that's the best that I can, you know, offer for you tonight.
But you guys informed the library board.
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
Right?
Hundred percent.
So who, who, who does the library board respond to then? Or they completely autonomous? They're appointed by you guys.
They are appointed by this board, yes, ma'am. Hundred percent.
So then how do you not have any relationship with them to say, hey, library board, you guys are being political or whatever, shouldn't be, shouldn't, this should not be happening. Go ahead and say what you want to say. And I'm sorry, Mr. Attorney, no one is saying to get rid of books. We're just saying, let's not highlight them in the middle of the library. They don't have to say and take them off the shelves. No one said to burn them or throw them away, even though I think a lot of them are garbage anyway, come over them. But the point is, somebody's got to be responsible. And I, you know, we're just going to get this angle going around, oh, no, copy, copy, copy. Someone has to get a word in, tell that company.
If you, hey, no.
I would have meant one week.
All right, Ms. DeBree.
Monsters and all that advertising Pride Month is certainly necessary in the library?
Yeah, Mr. Vice Chair, for a point of order.
One, one thing, you may explain that our regional, that that library is operated by a regional library board. It's unlike Chatham County. I believe Chatham County Commissioners perhaps may have authority over that. We are different because it is a regional library. And no one's saying that we agree or disagree with your comments. It's just the authority in the hand of, arm of what we can and cannot do. And so I think that's, this is not about our beliefs and our thoughts and all that, Betsy. This is, and that's, and I will tell you this, we will continue to work to get towards an answer for that. I will, I'll challenge you to, or ask you to do that, Mr. Council?
Sure, certainly. So several things. Again, number one, political speech or not political speech, it's still speech. And how content is displayed is a matter of speech, period. That's the First Amendment, the end. You cannot regulate speech. You're not allowed to, okay? Number one. Number two, as you indicated, Commissioner Daniel, that's exactly correct. This library system is a larger library system, rising out of state's borough library system. So that's not just Richmond Hill, it's also Pembroke and a variety of other areas as well. So it's a regional library system.
Pembroke doesn't have one.
This board does appoint certain board members to the library board. That is correct. But the library board itself then operates independently and under its own discretion, under its rules, and can appoint, hire, fire people under its discretion, not your discretion. That's just not how it works with this board.
Who, who hired the library?
Take to speak, I mean, it's still public comment.
So who hired the library? Who is the librarians direct, who do they report to?
That would be, I'm not sure if the library reports to the executive director directly or to the library board, but it does not report to you.
The library would be an employee of the state's borough regional library.
Which is, is that still Jennifer?
No.
Jennifer did.
Right. So I believe that that, this librarian is who she would report to Ms. Durham.
That's right.
Right. And Ms. Durham is an employee of the regional library. We're a funding mechanism for the library. If, if we ever did take a stance where we wanted to own, operate, facilitate all of the library, that's a completely different environment than what we're in right now.
It is, and even if you did that, you still couldn't regulate speech.
Right. And I, and I say that because I served on the library board ten or twelve years ago, and it's, it is, it operates independently.
Can I ask one more question?
Would you come up to the microphone?
Yes, sir, thank you. I talked to the regional director, Jennifer, and asked her about these questions, and I asked her for a mission statement, said, what is the mission statement of the library? I read it carefully, and it's not in the mission statement to promote gay pride month. They are not following their mission. So who holds them accountable for that?
Thank you. If you'd come up, please.
You mentioned political speech.
And just state your name, if you don't mind.
Yeah. Mentioned political speech and that it's protected, obviously for First Amendment, but in this case, who is deciding, only leaving it to one person to decide which political speech is allowed and which one is not? Because if they're going to do Pride Month, they should extend it to every other, you know, desire that the public has. So I think that she's picking, she's leaving it to one person to decide which speech is allowed and which one is not. So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that. Ms. Gregory?
Come on up.
I just wanted to piggyback on what she was saying earlier.
If you'd state your name, please.
Kathy Gregory.
Okay.
And, you know, there are a lot of us that have lived down here a long time, and there is, the Christian values in Richmond Hill are very, I think are very high. We did not go out and solicit all the other churches or anything, or other organizations or anything to speak to you about this tonight. This was just heartfelt from our, some of our own organizations and own churches. My biggest concern is if you allow this in there, the display, where's it going to stop? When are you going to have the satanic group? When are you going to have your political groups? You've already got your, your pride group in here. Are you going to allow us to have manger scenes and religious activities in the, in the library? When you open Pandora's box, it opens a lot. Like Betsy said, the books, put them back on the shelves. If the parents allow their children to look at that, we'll pray for them. We can't help that. And we applaud Pembroke. I think we have two of our county commissioners here from Pembroke. Their library does not have this display, or it did not as of yesterday. I'm not sure. But we appreciate it, and again, we just, we don't want to celebrate the anti-Christian or the anti-child or the anti-truth. I mean, we're just, and we applaud your responsible leadership. And if y'all could look into this, it would be great. But that's what happens. You know, you allow one person in, or one group in, what's going to, the next group, what is it going to be? We'd all like to have a Democratic or a Republican group in there. Can we do that?
Understood.
That'd be very difficult.
And, and, and just for the record, I've, I've heard from many, many people in this community about this issue, and on both sides, and both sides were very civil in the way that they described, you know, what their, their thoughts were on this. So I appreciate everybody coming tonight.
And, and we'll, I'll say this, we will, we'll ask to get some clarity on this. I will just make one point, that regardless of whether Pembroke has this or Richmond Hill has this, does not reflect the beliefs or anything of this commission. It just happens to be that Pembroke does not have.
I appreciate that. And I, and I do think we usually have a representative on the library board, like Daniel used to be, Dallas used to be, I'm not sure who's our representative now on that board. And I did realize it was, I think it's called Indemnize or something.
And I will say this too, just one additional, is you can go on our website and rally our HR, there's, you can, you can volunteer to show, express interest in anything, from planning and zoning to the library board. When these appointments come up, Mr. Johnston references and pulls all those advocates together, and then we're, we just pick what we know or who we interview, and we appoint them. So join up, you know, volunteer. Thank you.
If you, if you don't mind coming up, ma'am, and stating your name, okay?
I think this is only the second time in thirty years I've lived in Richmond Hill that I've actually spoken to a political committee. My name is Mary Sudd. I'm retired RN in pediatric critical care at Memorial. I worked there for thirty-eight years when I moved down to Georgia. I've been retired for about two and a half years. And what I'd like to say is, I don't usually like to get up and talk unless I've had a lot of time to prepare, and I just found out about this a few days ago. So I'm just going to give you some bullet points that I think are helpful, because they were really helpful to me. So the first one, very brief, definition of a library, a store room of books, okay? Librarian definition, a professional person trained in library science and engaged in library services. So then the next thing was, what is the most important act in libraries? Is it early literacy, which is how I was raised, or is it political activism? So then it kind of makes you look at things in a different way when you start thinking about that. I love my library. I literally, that was my favorite place to go, had a kid's library and an adult library in Massachusetts where I grew up, and I walked there every day, and I spent a lot of time there, and I think that's why I'm a pretty good writer and a great reader, because of that, because of what I was exposed to. So are libraries a reflection of what the community needs, which is what I think, or what the librarian thinks the community needs? And I think that's what you're seeing here. So that's not really what their job is, I don't believe. So also, I'm sorry. Pride Month, because I was not aware, I'm, I'm very well aware of Pride Month. For those who don't know, pays homage to the LGBTQ community in commemoration of the Stonewall uprising in June nineteen sixty-nine in New York City. Don't know that?
No.
Because I need to kind of go back and look and see where this all came from, because I just think that where it's originating from is just really interesting, and it makes me feel really uncomfortable in my community. I don't care what the adults do. I was a nurse, and I took care of all kinds of families. I took care of a lot of blended families. I also took care of a lot of gay marriage families. I didn't care. My job was to take care of their children and to get to know them and to be there for them in probably one of the worst times of their life. So whatever I think up here is not reflected to what I show to people, and it never will be. That's not who I am. So I don't think the books need to be removed. I don't think they need to be burned, but I think they need to be in appropriate section in the adult section. That's where they need to be. So if adults and parents want to go take those books and read them to their kids, have at it. I think they need to be able to do that. But having it be front and center is basically just a slap in the face to all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it, and hopefully I won't have to come back again.
Thank you.
You're welcome back anytime.
Thank you. I think, like Patrick said, I think we're all accessible if we're welcome to meet with anybody one-on-one. Feel free to reach out to any of us. And is that everything?
Please, come up.
I hesitate coming before you as I serve as your Bryan County Planning and Zoning Chairman, which is a, a job I love and cherish. These books, when I saw them in front of the children's, I've been a public health nurse for the past ten years. I work with children every day. I work with children from homes where there are not fathers there, there are not mothers there, grandparents are raising children in Bryan County like I've never seen before in these numbers. These children come in. We worked with the schools a few years ago, and they were able to, and I'll use the word censor, because I guess that's what it is, and I'm glad that Aaron's here tonight, and maybe he can speak to this. But the schools did put a flag on them. So I'm a tired grandma, I'm a tired mom. I used to take my children to the library all the time. It's one of my favorite places to go. However, my concern is, I've seen syphilis, herpes, chlamydia, gonorrhea rise in our teens here. I've seen it in our middle schoolers. This is my concern that when we sexualize children, and that's exactly what these books do. Betsy read you one of the more tamer books, it's the access. The same way I never would let my children go into certain stores, because there were certain magazines on there. Now, I can't parent every other family in Bryan County the way I would want to parent them. I see the detrimental effect that things like this have on children. I see it long-term. I see it in their teenage years, and I see it in their twenties and thirties. My question is if there could be, since you guys are going to speak to this more, if there could be some sort of commission formed, meeting held, even if it's just a simple meeting, between the library board, the executive director, and the public, instead of people going in one at a time, checking out books, having conversation? If there could just, I find that when we sit down and just talk to each other, I find it here in this, I find it on planning and zoning, I find it in other things that I volunteer with. If we can just sit down and have discussion, my concern is for kids. I love kids in this community, that's why I do what I do. I stay in, involved in things, and I would just ask that, as you're looking into this, if that we could please just have some sort of sit-down, and maybe there could be some resolution. The schools were able to put a sticker on it, and maybe moms and dads notified. That way, when moms and dads go into the library, they can say, oh, let me flip through this book really quickly. go into the library, they can say, oh, let me flip through this book really quickly, and they won't have their, you know, 12-year-old, 10-year-old, 7-year-old coming in to the kitchen table saying, "Mom, Dad, what does this mean when it's not age-appropriate?" So, again, not asking for books to be removed, not asking for even the librarian to be removed, we all, we're in America, we're all, we all have different val, different values, different opinions, but just having some conversation so that kids can't have direct access to it. So, thank you, guys, I appreciate your time, appreciate what you do.
All right, Commissioner comments?
Thank you all for coming.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Vice Chair, we need to go into executive session, please, before we.
Okay, yeah, need a motion to go into executive session for personnel.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into executive session for the purpose of personnel.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passed.